Twenty-five regular meeting for the Wasilla City Council is now called to order. The time is 6:00 P.M. Before we begin, I ask all council members to please silence and put away cell phones. If you need to conduct personal business during the meeting, you may make a motion to recess. For those participating by phone, please keep your device muted unless you are speaking. When speaking, kindly state your name for the benefit of those viewing the live stream. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast live. The camera is located above the clock at the back of the council chambers. Our proceedings follow Robert's Rules of Orders as set forth in Wasilla Municipal Code two dot zero four dot zero nine zero. To promote an orderly and respectful meeting, I respectfully ask the council to observe the following rules. Please seek recognition before speaking. No member may speak more than twice on the same motion without a vote to suspend the rules. No member may speak a second time until all who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. These guidelines help ensure fairness, efficiency, and mutual respect during our discussions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cottle?
Here.
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Crafton?
Here.
Councilmember Vee Lock?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
And incoming council member-elect Johnson, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. You do have a call, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Please rest. For the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Schmidt, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Before considering any changes, Councilmember Rubio has a conflict of interest to declare. Ms. Rubio, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to declare a financial interest in action memorandum number twenty-five dash fifty-seven, which involves Big Dipper Construction, a company owned by my father. Under WMC two dot zero one dot zero one zero, this is considered an immediate family interest. I request to be excused from any discussion or action on this matter under WMC two dot zero one dot zero four zero.
Thank you. Are there any other conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? I have one, which is item number eight point four point one, AM number twenty-five fifty-seven. The contract change ordered to Big Dipper Construction will be moved from the consent agenda to new business as Councilmember Rubio will be stepping out and refraining from any participation or action related to the contract due to a declared conflict of interest. Are there any other? Hearing no further changes, the agenda is approved as presented by unanimous consent. We are special orders of the day. I would like to begin by presenting outgoing Councilmember Nikki Vee Lock with a service award in recognition of her dedicated service to the city. Councilmember Vee Lock, it is my pleasure to present you with this small token of appreciation from the city of Wasilla for all you have contributed to our success, and thank you for your service. We look forward to having more time with you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vee Lock, do you have anything to say? That you would like to say?
Be nice. Be nice. Thank you. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve our community, and I've enjoyed it. I've learned immensely, lots of stuff. It's a different language. It was a different world, and it's been great, and I know you guys will do just great without me, too. So, thank you.
The Madam Clerk will now administer the oath of office to council members Alina Rubio and Mark Schmidt, who were elected to the council at the October seventh election.
And, Madam Mayor, if I may, just for the sake of the audience, Councilmember Tim Johnson, who is participating telephonically, I had previously administered the oath of office to him, so he is all ready to assume his seat as well.
Thank you.
When I say your name, the name, you can each take your turn saying it. Is that work? Do you guys want to stand there?
That's fine.
Where do you want? Me. Do I raise your right hand? You have to, I, say your name.
Alina Rubio.
Mark Schmidt.
Having duly appointed as an official of the city of Wasilla.
Having duly.
Having been duly appointed as an official of the city of Wasilla.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Alaska.
The Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the city of Wasilla Municipal Code.
And the city of Wasilla Municipal Code.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge my duties as council member.
Discharge my duties as council member.
For the city of Wasilla.
For the city of Wasilla.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And congratulations.
Yay!
And then I don't know if there's family members that want to maybe take some pictures, or you're more than welcome to.
I hear you got to come on this side. My family's here. Never get them all here. Rubio, you got to come up.
Am I part of city council now? Am I taking your shirt?
Stand on your chair. Move it, I'm trying to hide.
Thank you.
Let me step out.
Oh. You're the shortest one there.
One, two, three. I wasn't blessed with legs.
You'll be okay with me. Short family. You'll be okay with me. Except for my wife. I'm so under desk. You want to hide behind her?
Get down here, we're sitting next to you.
Perfect.
Good.
Getting stuck with Tim?
Yeah.
Is that on your phone?
Let me get out.
Yeah, would you mind stopping there while on his?
Nope.
We will take a five-minute recess to celebrate the election of council members Johnson, Rubio, and Schmidt. The meeting will recess until six fifteen.
We have refreshments in the back.
Is this a different one? There you go.
Commission and agencies report. The acting city planner, Nygaard, is absent this evening. The planning commission met on October 14th. The only action item on that agenda was approval of meeting minutes. The October 28th and November 4th planning commission meetings have been canceled. The new scheduled meeting is on, I'm sorry, the next scheduled meeting is on November 18th. We are now at the Main Street couplet project update, DOT and HDR engineering. Ma'am?
All right, good evening. Thanks for having us both here tonight. Was still a Main Street project reconstruction update. My name is Chris Benz. I'm a project manager with Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities. I am brand new to this project, just been with it for a couple of months. Previous project manager has retired and sailed off into sunset and left me with a beauty. So actually, he did a really great job, but pretty major project that we are looking to get to the finish line, so pretty excited about being able to talk about that and our final steps in getting this thing ready for construction. Photo stock's the best photo we could get and short notice for this presentation, so the likeness is sort of uncanny though, so appreciate that. And with me tonight is Edith McKee with HDR. She's a project manager who's been with the project for much longer than I have, so hopefully she'll be able to be able to answer most of the questions we have tonight. So this slide here is just showing some other updates to project team members working on the project. Like myself, most of the other DOT folks are relatively also new to the project due to a slew of retirements that we have had within the agency. But most of those HDR staff members, I think, have been with the project for a fair amount of time, so some consistency there for us. For tonight's agenda, I think we're going to go over a couple of things that hopefully will be of interest. We'll start off with the project, the purpose of the project, what we're looking to accomplish. We'll talk about the design, some elements of that, of the design that we currently have integrated. Also, current activities that we're working on, things that we have yet to complete, what's next and what we need to get to the finish line, and then we'll talk about what construction looks like. So with that, the purpose of the project's really focused in the three main key areas to improve overall travel efficiency, reduce congestion, and enhance safety. So within those three concepts, you know, we're going to look to improve traffic circulation patterns within this downtown area here via a couplet. We're going to decrease traffic delays primarily through increased connectivity that this will provide. We're also going to look to, for enhancements of safety, we'll be looking to add new features to the area such as bike and pedestrian facilities. We'll also be upgrading all of this corridor here to current design standards. Also, some of the things that this will result in is reduced conflict points of various types throughout the corridor by creating these one-way couplet. But that also includes some reduction to railroad conflicts that we currently see as well. And then overall, all of these features that we're going to be incorporating here will reduce overall crash rates, at least we're predicting so. So with that, I want to turn it over to Edith to go over some of the project history.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, thank you, Chris. So as many people here in the room know, the project started about 30 years ago. And they, right? It's been a bit, it's just been a little bit. And they did an initial alternative analysis, and they had a selected alternative and had an EA, which is an environmental assessment, was prepared based on that preferred alternative. Then they went back and looked at the growth, the expected growth, and realized that that alternative wasn't going to serve the purpose and need that was identified. And so they went back and looked at the alternatives again and came up with a new one, which is this couplet, which became the preferred alternative, and they did another EA reevaluation, which was approved in, oh my goodness, that one was approved in 2012. And then the preliminary engineering report started and the draft EA and the finding of no significant impact, and the project design contract was awarded to HDR in 2014. And that's when the design and engineering efforts were initiated. Since then, we've had several open houses, we've attended the Matsu Transportation Fair, there was a downtown business owners meeting, and have had several other events to share the current design and the design as it's progressed with the community. The local design, which is what we call 30, 35%, was completed in February 2015 and July of 2016. The plans in hand, which is what we call a 65 or 75% level, was completed in August of 2017. There was a little interim where the project team was on hold for almost a year, but then we started back up again, and PSN, or what we call 95% design, was completed in July of 2024. And all of those designs are available on the project webpage, as is the environmental document and the traffic analysis and the other supporting studies that have been done. So the selected alternative, which is what is in the current EA and what we are currently designing too, includes the Main Street Yenlo one-way couplet, which has northbound traffic on the Yenlo-Talkeetna leg and the southbound traffic on the Main Street. We do have to extend Yenlo and Talkeetna streets both to the north and to the south. The Main Street, Knit Gusebe, becomes your southbound corridor. And we are adding new pedestrian and bicycle facilities that are separated from traffic on the entire route. And I think one of the things that's really interesting, and you can see it in that bottom slide on the right, is called a cycle track. And I think one of the unique features of a cycle track is that they are separated from the roadway, so it doesn't use the roadway shoulder. It's its own dedicated facility that's separated from pedestrian facilities. It's a significant safety improvement. It really removes that conflict of vehicles and bikes and pets from the roadway. And it really provides a lot of connectivity within the community. And so that top slide is the Main Street. So this is if you were standing at the Main Street and Parks intersection and looking north up Main Street. And so you can see that there is shared through and then dedicated right and left turning opportunities. And these are also updated on the project webpage along with a animation that kind of shows traffic moving, so kind of an upgrade to what was there before, which was kind of a rendition like this. And so this is where we are, where we're currently at, is we are advancing plans to 100% and working through the project certification process. And within the right-of-way, what we're, what we're acquiring are called temporary construction easements, or TCEs. These are, essentially, we're renting somebody's space from their property. It is a temporary impact. They are compensated for this impact. The project is pursuing 10 of those, and we still have one outstanding. So nine have been obtained and one is still in process. Temporary construction permits are, the owner is not compensated. They are considered mutually beneficial to both the owner and the project. This is often a reconstruction of a driveway or an access. The project needed 44 of them. We have three outstanding, so 41 have been obtained. Easements are public. Public easements, most of these are for utilities. They are a purchase, but they remain available to the public. So 13 are needed for this project. We still have one outstanding, so 12 have been obtained. The project needed 11 acquisitions, so this is where the property is purchased and becomes the part of the roadway right-of-way. So we needed 11 of them for this project, and we still have three outstanding ones. We're also working through encroachments, which is a feature that is within the existing right-of-way. If the encro, and they're called encroachments. If an encroachment is located within the right-of-way, this gets a little tricky. So you can have encroachments that are, the owner is being compensated for because the encroachment is not in the existing right-of-way, but it's, will be within the right-of-way that needs to be acquired. So those are compensated encroachments. Encroachments that are within the existing right-of-way of the roadway, the owner is not compensated, and those do need to be removed. So we have sent out letters, so you may have residents or property owners who have been notified that they have an encroachment that needs to be removed for the project to proceed. So we are in the process of negotiating those. They are also included in the plans, they're on the removal of structures and obstructions table, so if they are not removed by the owner, then the project does come through and remove them. Another key component to us certifying the project are the utility relocations. As you all probably know, this corridor has a lot of utilities, and I think we're working with just about every entity, so N-Star, GCI, ACS, MTA, MEA, the city, and the railroad. We're in the process of preparing utility agreements. We are in the draft stage of those. Those will go to the DOT, the DOT will remove them, and once the drafts are approved, we very quickly move to final. The other component is we're working through BABA calculations. Under the new administration, Buy America, Build America, components have come into play because we didn't certify by November 1st. So we are working through the BABA calculations. For environmental actions, so the three key components of the project being able to certify are in right-of-way utilities and environmental. And so the environmental actions that we are working through is an EA reeval, which needs to be completed within six months of when we bid the project, which will allow us to do an expedited reevaluation when we go to bid. So we're in the midst of that. The 106 coordination, I think most people here are aware that there is a museum, it has a porch that is encroaching in the right-of-way. That is requiring a pretty significant process, evaluation, documentation, and then mitigation. So a memorandum of agreement was prepared, it was sent to the city, the city did sign that. But based on comments that we received from SHPO, that is being redrafted and adding some signatories. That is in the works, and once that's ready, that will come back before you for signature again. The historic photographs were completed earlier this month. They made a point of getting out and doing those while we still had good light and good, you know, there's still a little bit of trees on the leaves on the trees so that the photos look nice. So that is in coordination. There will be a public outreach component of that that will be separate from what we're doing here. Once those three actions, or I guess not really three actions, but those three categories of actions, because there's quite a lot to do under those, we'll have completed certification. We're targeting to have that done by the end of '25, early '26. Where at that point, we'll be able to request authority to proceed to Phase Four and Phase Seven, which is construction and utility relocation from FHWA, where the funding will be obligated, and then we can bid and award the project. Bids typically take, they're out for three weeks, so we're anticipating doing that in early in '26. And then construction will kick off in '26. We're expecting construction, I know, right? It's been a bit. We're expecting construction to take at least two seasons, potentially three, depending on when the work starts. Some things have longer lead times now. And then we, you know, we're not going to, we expect there to be traffic impacts, we expect businesses to be impacted. The construction team will work with businesses and with other owners to try to limit when those impacts occur during business hours, but because there is so much trenching and undergrounding going on for utilities and to install a new storm brain system, there may be times when driveways may be impacted. But their, construction does work with owners to facilitate that and make that as easy as possible. DOT has a website, Alaska 511, where everything is available. You can find out who's managing the contract, you know, who to contact, so that will be available once the project goes to bid. And then, the project webpage has been updated, so the documents are available. That 95% design that I mentioned is on there, so are the previous design milestones. There's a project actually, some FAQs. The schedule is on there. That map that we showed is on there. The new typical sections or graphics on what the typical sections will look like for the various sections of roadway are there. And of course, our contact information is also there if you'd like to reach out to the team. Concludes what we had prepared for you today, but we are happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Ms. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you both for coming here and presenting tonight. If we could back up to the slide which had the two pictures on the right-hand side, says the title is "Design," that one right there. So when I look at that, and then I look at the next page, I see different things here. So when you look at the top of that picture on the right, it looks like there's four lanes heading south into KGB. But the depiction on the next slide shows only three lanes. What's, what's going on there? Is there, or is there not dedicated right-hand-only turn lane? And then one non-optional lane, which goes straight, and then one, it just doesn't match between the two slides?
No, that's correct. So if we go back to, if we advance to the next. So this was an early graphical representation on that top, and so I kind of included both of these, so you could see, like, initially, when they kind of, at the very early stages of the project, this is kind of what they were anticipating. And then the graphic below is a, is the shot from the current design, which is what we call an F-sheet. And it shows, and this matches the typical sections that you'll see on the previous slide. So in that upper right quadrant of the bottom of the F-sheet, you can see there that that's the Parks Highway, and the lane configuration matches what you see on the previous slide, which would be the upper, upper slide screenshot, typical section, which shows the through and the right and the through and a left and then a dedicated right.
Three lanes and not four?
Correct.
That's good. And if you could advance one more slide again. So on the bottom of that slide, what did you call it?
The F-sheet, the design sheet, yep.
On the bottom of that, on the Parks Highway, you know, headed to the east, you can see a X in the road there, which currently is in the shoulder. I mean, currently, there's two lanes, and then there's a fairly wide shoulder, which, you know, people illegally used as a right-hand turn lane, they kind of queue up in there. What does that X mean? Is there going to be some sort of obstruction there to keep that from happening? What does that mean?
No, that's, so that's denoting the railroad crossing that's coming up on Main Street in this case. So it's to warn those drivers that once they turn, they'll be turning into a railroad crossing. And that's placed on the main line in instances where the distance between the main road, like the Parks in this case, and that crossing is a short distance. Not enough space for queuing.
Okay. All right, that kind of makes sense there. And then, just as a general comment, you talked about, you know, the 511, which is a very great tool. It would be nice if there was some signage at the beginning of the project that had, you know, questions, you know, 511, put it right there, because, I mean, as a councilperson, I get a lot of questions that I can't answer that I just have to refer to you guys or refer to the website. But just like we have a, you know, Stormwater Pollution Protection Plan thing there, I mean, it seems like it would be pretty easy to try and diffuse a lot of questions or to have the right person to begin with, so just a comment.
Thanks, thank you for that.
Ms. Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm going to jump to, it was the one that had the big project overview, purpose of the project, just so, for point of reference. It looks like we're cutting off the Railroad Avenue where it connects to Talkeetna Street. So is, if I remember correctly, there was going to be a one-way connecting some of those, and so we're just rerouting the traffic? Could, has that changed since the last time we've seen it?
So we are obliterating or removing that direct access from Railroad Avenue into the Talkeetna leg. It's too close to have that access be to Railroad tracks, so that piece is being removed. They do still have access from other roadways to get to the Yenlo-Talkeetna leg of the couplet, but that piece there is obliterated, so they won't have direct access from that point.
So basically, traffic that, or people that need to get down into that section are going to be routed through Susitna onto, can't remember what the middle street there is, Boundary.
So those north connections, the connections to the south are still, will still remain. So somebody coming, you know, from, because that Railroad Avenue continues around the corner, would be able to come, I mean, they would probably select to take the road that's the next one down to the, Susitna versus going to Railroad. But that, the north-south connections between Railroad Avenue and Susitna remain, it's just that piece right there that approaches the Yenlo-Talkeetna component has to be removed because it's too close to have an access to the railroad crossing.
Okay, thank you. So basically, accessing what I believe it's Peking Restaurant on in-between Talkeetna and KGB will be accessed through Boundary or off of the KGB access essentially. And then same with the LIO office at the Matsu Central will be accessed from Susitna to Denali Street at that point, instead of being able to utilize Talkeetna right now. That's what I'm understanding.
Or they, they would use Talkeetna, and then they would have to take a turn onto the, and then be able to use the north-south connectors to reach those locations. And that the restaurant on the corner there should still be accessible between Yenlo and Main Street on Railroad. So it's just the little piece that would allow you to have direct access onto Yenlo that will be removed.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then another question was, sorry, I want to go back to what Mr. Graham was looking at, the current activities project certification one, this one here. I thought that upper one, the colored picture, that looks like coming off of Talkeetna and then going, would be north onto Yenlo, because to the right up there in the upper right-hand corner, you see the retaining wall with the City of Wasilla sign right there. Is that what that image actually is, and these two are two different images?
No, I struggled with this too, because I looked at these and I was like, because these graphical representations were done probably back in 2014, and I didn't join the project until 2020. But after looking at this for quite a while, because you're correct, that is the Chinese restaurant, but that lane configuration aligns with the original design that was intended for Main Street. So I, I struggled with putting this in here because I was like, technically, this, whoever generated this graphic, it's not the actual correct orientation or location, so part of me thought about...
Very good eye.
Yeah, good eye.
That's what confused me when Mr. Graham was talking about it. I'm like, now I'm really confused here.
No, and I agree with you, because it is a bit of a confusion, because, and I struggled with whether or not to put this in, but the intention is that that is Main Street, turning onto Parks. But the railroad crossing, there is a railroad crossing on the Main Street side, but not on that side. It's like they put two things together. I agree. I apologize. I will never use this slide again.
Yeah. And then just last comment is, I love seeing that we have a turn lane coming off of Parks Highway onto KGB. I think, I remember when I saw some of the original plans, that wasn't there because of the railroad and everything. That, to me, is such a vital piece to this. I've heard a lot of comments about that needing there, because people coming down 45 to make that, that turn on there is, can get dangerous, especially on the icy roads that we have. People don't see your turn, and so glad to see that's in there. That's all, I'm super excited to see this working next year.
You. Okay. Ms. Graham.
Thank you. And this might be a question for the administration, might be a question for you. There was discussion of the museum porch, you know, being an encroachment on the right-of-way there. There was some mention of an agreement that has already been made. Could we know what that agreement is? Are we going to move the museum out of the way? What are we going to do with that building? What's, what's the plan?
Public Works.
Thank you, through the mayor. So the plan right now is to shorten the porch. And so there's a, the way it's built is there are three supports, one against the building, one in the center, and one on the outside closest to the road. The plan is to shrink it back to the center support. We're working with SHPO and the state to identify how we'll do that and keep the historical requirements, and that's kind of what Edith alluded to, is making sure that that MOA is specific about how the historic presence of the facility is maintained in a certain way. So that's part of the plan, is to shrink it back so it's out of the right-of-way, but keep the porch in a modified state.
Thank you.
No other question. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
30 years, we're going!
We still haven't turned the show.
We will, we're getting super close. We're closer than we've been. There you go, I like that.
That was like three years ago, too.
Okay. We have no ordered schedule for public hearings, so we will proceed to persons to be heard. And I will open persons to be heard. This is a time for members of the public to share their views with the council. Please note, this is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers may be referred to administration and items raised may be taken under advisement. And Mr. David Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. For the record, my name is David Wilson, I'm a city resident. Today, I'm here on behalf of my employer, the Matsu Health Foundation. Just again, just want to thank Councilman Vlak for her service and many years dedication, and again, welcome our three newly elected officials, or re-elected, I guess, officials, Councilman Smith, Rubio, and Johnson. I believe you had a little note of thank you and congratulations from Esther Pitts, our CEO. And also want to say thank you to the city and for council members for attending our Matsu Measures Training and learning about our data dashboard, which is Matsu Measures. And hopefully you guys found that useful, and we're always, again, just looking to partner in ways that we can help further the growth of the Matsu Borough to be the healthiest borough in the state. So with that, I'll just say thank you, and you guys have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Ms. Sterns.
Good evening, my name is Tom Sterns. I'm the senior ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. And last Saturday, I believe it was, we had a harvest brunch fundraiser at our location, and I see a lot of faces that were there. And that was really exciting to me, because that means... And that was really exciting to me, because that means that you guys are listening when I'm speaking here. Thank you very much for coming. We oversold the, the whole event. We had 130 people there, and if you were there, you knew that. It was packed. The, with the ticket sales, the sponsorships, the online auction, merchandise that we sold, dessert auction, and the baskets, our goal was $30,000, and we raised $37,100. And I think that was great. So that was really neat. But that's over, and we have to move on. And we're gonna. We have, coming up on Friday, our Halloween costume contest. Now, this isn't just any contest. As you see here, if you come and dress, dress up, first place, you could get 100 bucks, second place 15, third place 25. So that's this, this Friday at Wasi. And then, the next day, all of you should be over at our place, so that you can be in our Wasi Holiday Craft Fair. Because all of you need to get ready for Christmas, right? So, all the great presents are right there. You won't have to do any more shopping. Just come on down. And, and then, after that, is on the 11th of November, we're going to have our Veterans' Day recognition ceremony. We're going to have a presentation of the Quilts of Valor. There'll be some people receiving their blankets from the Quilts of Valor folks. And so, and then, and then, and then, we have a board meeting on the 20th of November. And on, from the 17th to the 22nd of November, it's, my oh my, it's pie! Where you can buy a pie, you can donate a pie. If you donate a pie, it will go to our seniors. They'll cut them up and put them in the food things for them. And, and that'll be the 17th through 22nd. Oh, the 26th, wouldn't want to miss this, is our Thanksgiving meal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sterns. Cheyenne Peterson. Please begin your testimony with your first and last name.
Okay, Cheyenne Peterson. Good evening. My name is Cheyenne Peterson. I'm the Board President of Wasilla U Soccer. I'm here representing Wasilla U Soccer in support of the City of Wasilla AM number 2556, to approve the utility extension for the bathroom at Bumpus Soccer Fields. The extension will have a significant impact beyond restroom access. It will make it possible to install lighting around the soccer fields and the surrounding trail systems. Improved lighting will enhance safety and security in the area, helping to deter break-ins and vandalism that have resulted in damages of the porta-potties, fields, and nearby buildings. Additionally, with proper lighting, U Soccer activities could extend by an additional eight to six weeks. And this would provide more opportunities for local youths to stay active, develop their skills, engage in positive community activities. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Dan Fleckenstein.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name's Dan Fleckenstein, and I'm the President of Mattsu Softball Association. Thank you for working with Mattsu Softball over the past thirty or so years under our management agreement at the Bumpus Softball Complex. We really appreciate being able to use that facility, and have been very diligent and intentional to make sure that we maintain it well, and we strive to provide a high-quality experience for all the users of that park. I wanted to follow up on the discussion from the October 13th meeting regarding extending electricity to the soccer field and the, and the softball complex for the bathrooms. Over the last five years, Mattsu Softball has invested significant labor hours and financial resources to make improvements with the goal of having the nicest ballpark in the state of Alaska for our softball community. Last summer, we had approximately 1,000 people per week at the park, and we hosted five large events over the weekends, which saw as many as 1,500 people in attendance. Having accessible bathrooms with functional toilets and running water is by far the most common suggestion that we hear from folks using the ballpark. This would not only have an immediate positive impact on the park, but would also be an asset in the future as we work to expand and improve the park in other ways. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that you support the project to bring electricity to the soccer fields and the Bumpus ballpark. Thank you.
Kara Kabru.
Kara Kabru.
That's good. That's close. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I have a little property. I'm Jill.
You need to state your first and last name for the record, please.
Thank you. Jill Kara Kabru. And I'm here to express my concern about single-family residential zoning in my neighborhood. And there's a, a house that's not, that is running a commercial business and has a junkyard. Officer Seidel has talked to this gentleman and given him time to clean up his lot, but he has not done so. And I understand that there may be some changes in Title 16 that is preventing follow-up for having this gentleman clean up his property. I'm not sure if Title 16 is being amended, and if it's going to impact my property by changing the zoning of these parcels.
Okay. We will get back to you on that, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And William Baxter. You have three minutes, and begin by stating your first and last name.
William Baxter. I'm from Anchorage, but I used to live out here. My parents moved out here in 1971. But I represent, I volunteer for FFA and 4H, and there's FFA and Palmer, Mattsu Career Track, and, and Wasilla Middle School, and Palmer Middle School, and that. But I, I, FFA kids call me Sticker Bill. And they're, I, it's a really great program, and I'm trying to push FFA in most schools in Alaska. I talked to Rick, Nick Baich is a senior aide, but he says he can't really do anything. It's federal. And, but the other thing is, another thing I'm pushing, like, when I live in, I live in Anchorage, I, I go to the Fairview Community Council, and they did a, they do, they did a community garden there, and they have a couple of community gardens they started. And I think that's a really good idea for community gardens here and in the valley in Anchorage. And I'm, I'm going to other councils in Anchorage and see how I can push that. Thank you.
All right. I will close persons to be heard. We are on to consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the items for approval under the consent agenda by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have the regular meeting minutes, October 13th, 2025. We have one introduction, recommended public hearing next regular meeting, November 10th, 2025. Ordinance serial number 2536, amending the fiscal year 2026 budget by appropriating $269,353 from the general fund, fund balance to fund architectural services to provide for the schematic design, 35% design development, 65% and construction documents for the Wasilla Library expansion. No resolutions, and one AM left on our consent agenda, AM number 2558, approving the city council regular meeting schedule for calendar year 2026.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Move the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, got a second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crafton and seconded by Councilmember Cottle to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. Madam Clerk, we are now to unfinished business. We don't, yes, please read the AM by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. AM number 2556, approving a utility service agreement to Mountainne's Electric Association in, in the amount of $115,780 for utility extensions related to restroom facilities construction at Bumpus Recreation Area. Yeah, so we have a motion to adopt pending. So just is there discussion?
Is there, there is a motion pending, to adopt pending. So is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I did have the clerk pass out papers, and I don't know if Ted or the clerk would like to explain this.
Through the mayor to the council, we have requested that we postpone this AM in order to actually do a resolution moving money from the Newcombe restroom upgrades to the project, in order to ensure that we are actually doing this correctly, and actually letting the council, council know that in order to finish this project, we had to move money from 4502, which was an FY '24 actual budget, to 4518 and 4525. And I just spoke to our Public Works Director, and he has stated that we cannot utilize those funds for Newcombe Park due to the fact that those restrooms are actually in the DOT right-of-way. So, we are planning to ask for a resolution to move the 115,000, and then actually move the rest of the money through an ordinance back into fund balance to wait for the council to actually do their master plan in order to reallocate those funds. And I'm available for any questions.
Hearing none.
Through, through the chair to the body. So what administration is requesting is another motion to postpone. And then at the next meeting, when the resolution comes forward moving the money, we will also marry it up with the AM. So if council approves the transfer of the funds, then the word of the contract will go with that. Does that make sense?
Mr. Graham.
Madam Mayor, I move to postpone AM 2526 to the next regular meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Rubio, second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Rubio to postpone AM number 2556 to the next scheduled meeting. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, then the AM number 2556 is postponed. We are on to new business. Goodbye, Ms. Rubio. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. AM number 2557, contract change order to Big Dipper Construction in the amount of $16,706 for West Foggy Drive improvements.
Is there a motion to approve AM number 25-57?
Madam Mayor, I move AM 2557.
Is there a second?
I move a second.
Madam Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Schmidt to approve AM number 2557. Is there discussion? Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved this out of the consent agenda, because I just had some questions, looking back at the history of this, and if I may address Mr. Shaw here. So, what is the status of that project? I'm kind of confused. Is, is it already paved? Have we already told Dipper to finish this project up? And what we're doing here is just cleaning up the money trail? But I'm, I'm kind of confused here. I mean, we're only looking at, you know, $17,000, you know, which is a lot of money in my budget, but in your budget is, is pretty minimal. And it, so it doesn't require going out to bid or anything, but it does require the council to approve the money before it's spent. So is, is the project already done, and now we're just paying for it? And did he do this out of the goodness of his own heart? How did he get approval to finish this project without the council saying, sure, you can spend another $17,000?
Through the mayor. Great questions. So this was a small project. It started out at a bid of 57,000. Through our procurement rules, there's a up-to-10% contingency associated with those projects. So it had a contingency of $5,700. There are unit prices in this project, and so, as outlined in the, the staff report, there were some neighbors that needed some adjustments to where their culverts were, and there were some overruns in those costs, or escalations in the contract. The, the thing that pushed it over the $5,700 change order authority were some unit costs that weren't known until the project was complete. So, back to your first question, is the project complete? Yes, in that the road has been rebuilt, but no, it's not paved. That wasn't part of the project. This was to improve the driving surface of Foggy and improve drastic drainage issues. A third of the, of the road was a lake, basically, every time it rained. So we had gone through a pretty convoluted process to get an access easement from the railroad, to let us move into the right-of-way, remove a berm that I think was created during the initial road construction, but what it did was build a dam, so water couldn't drain away. Railroad gave us access. We went in and reshaped those slopes and formed drainage ditches that would keep the road drier. We increased the width of the road. We added structural road base with the foreplanning that it'll eventually be in the paving project, whether that's through a change order in this current contract that we have, or if it's in the next year. Some point, it'll be paved, and it's ready for that. The project was completed, and the contractor had some extra work within that authority. And then they went through and they measured the rest of their work. And so two things that were extra work that weren't known until the work was done and it was measured, was some more fill. So they imported more construction fill, so that the road drained properly into the ditch. And then the seeding and the topsoil that they had to do on the surfaces that they were touching. So one of the railroad's requirements was, because of SWIP concerns, stormwater concerns, if you touch it and disturb it, you need to seed it. So they finished the work, and then mapped it out, and said, this is what we did. And so now, that has exceeded our internal cost escalations. And so it comes back to the council for your review. We feel very confident that their work was done top-notch. It was in conjunction with a good project, but we're seeking the approval from the council to increase their PO and their contract to cover that work that they did.
If I may follow up, Madam Mayor. So, I think I understood everything that you said. So at this point, Foggy Bottom is an unpaved road with good drainage, ready to be paved, but was 2.9 miles or, or no, it's, it was, that will be, that you say is in next year's paving budget that we approve. Is that correct?
It'll be part of what we asked you to approve.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
I think you did your question. No?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you said this Foggy Bottom, it's not a paved road?
Foggy is not currently paved. It has D1 on top of it, so it's far more drivable than it's ever been, but it's not paved.
I guess this question might be for later on in the agenda. So it's not on the list either to be paved? So it's not on the list either to be paved? Is that correct?
In the, are you talking about the IM?
Yes.
Right. This was not initially included in the original list.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is not a huge amount in this situation here. But how often is it, are we coming across contractors doing work and then coming back and going, oh, I went over what I was allowed to spend and now you guys owe me more money?
Great question. So, you know, we don't want to run contracts that drag us into unapproved expenditures. This is a short project with a very small total cost. So that 10% is normally the shock absorber, if you will, if we need to make some changes to a project. Also, the length of the project tends to be a shock absorber. So if we have a longer term project that has identified cost overruns, we talk about that early. We bring it in, in the, whenever it's known and it comes forward and we say to the council, to the administration, hey, we are going to have a cost overrun. What do we want to do? That usually gives you time to say, do we need to remove something from the contract to keep it where we want it to be? Or are these things that we must deal with and so the cost increase is approved? This was a short project duration. So they basically completed it in one fell swoop and didn't have any intermediate pay requests. And so when they brought the final quantities in, this is the, the cleaning up of the final cost based on approved work. It's, it's not rejected because it meets our standards and it was necessary to have a complete project.
If I could follow up, Mayor.
Okay.
So if we said no, what would they do?
Good question. So they would have to take legal action and say that they didn't do anything that was rejected, that they worked in good faith to provide a good project. And then they turned it over to Holly for the full legal review. But they would probably have a claim and say, no, you need to pay us. And we'd go through a legal arbitration.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay, we are now, oh, would somebody go get Elena, please?
Here she comes.
Okay, let the record show that councilperson Rubio has rejoined us. So, Madam Clerk, please read the item in communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item. I am number 2517, Wasilla Road Paving Initiative Status Update.
We are now on to audience comments. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I will close audience comments and bring it back to the dais. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder to council members, we did disperse the travel forms. So if anyone's interested in attending AML this year, just give us a buzz tomorrow and we'll get your travel arrangement squared away. And then we will see you all here next regular meeting, November 10th. And then, Madam Mayor, I'll leave it to you to talk about our Halloween here at City Hall.
Okay, Madam Attorney.
No comment, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Cottle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I need my little list here on my phone. Last two weeks since council meetings have been very busy in the Matzoo, very busy. I did attend the Matzoo Fall Economic Summit. And I have to give kudos to Director Shaw. He gave a nice presentation, very short, very sweet, but very informative. He, you know, you were great, but not taking a long time. You were perfect at it. And then I also attended the public meeting for water and sewer, which was a very informative meeting. I was glad to see some people attend that. And then I also attended a presentation at the, at the library. The library does Alaska History Discussion Group. It's the third Thursday of each month during the winter from 5:30 to 7:00, except that they don't do it in December now. They'll have one in November. November 20th is the next one. And the last one that I attended to, it was a discussion on mining in Alaska and, you know, in the, in the Matzoo and things like that. It was really, really informative. And it's not just a lecture. It's a discussion and people are very interactive with the talks and stuff. Next, the next one on the 20th of November is going to be about Walter Teelin. Walter and Vivian Teelin had Teelin's store here. They're actually relatives of my husband. So, you know, it was interesting to me. And I got to hear kind of a, kind of like a shorter version of what's going to happen on the 20th at the Historical Society's annual fundraiser. Really, really interesting, very informative. And this one's going to be more in depth. And there will actually be, some of the grandchildren of Walter Vivian Teelin are going to be there and are really excited to hear this. But this is just a really good thing to do. Our library has so many programs and things going on all the time that people don't always realize. You need to check it out. There's so much to do there. There's so much to see and to listen to. So support our amazing library. Go to some of these, these programs and discussions. And you'll walk away with, you know, just having a really great evening and learning so much that you didn't know about our own little valley here. So I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. And welcome back, Mr. Johnson, I should say. Since it, you know, it feels like it was just yesterday. You were here with us and here you are again. So looking forward to working with you again. And congratulations to Mr. Schmidt and Rubio. I mean, you're, you're here again, so. But I'm looking forward to another, whether it'll be three more years with you. So great meeting tonight. I did have one question. I know I trotted with our clerk about it, but I can't remember to our attorney. Where's, where are we at with the downtown overlay repeal? Because if I recall, the Planning Commission had done something with it and we, it needed to come back to us now.
Yes, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution that included an attachment that is a ordinance for council's consideration. The resolution recommends adoption of that ordinance. But they wanted to bring council a product, given the nature, the direction that council, council gave the commission. So I anticipate that you will see that on the next agenda. Is that right, Clerk?
Through the chair to Councilmember Crafton. I just finished that up today, staff report. And also you'll see that introduced on November 10th.
Perfect. And then just another comment was to, I believe it's Jill. We, we did do a lot with our Title 16. I'd love to talk with you about it. But there's a lot, a lot going into that. And otherwise, I'd like to see that one come forward. So thank you all for tonight and we'll see you here in a couple of weeks.
Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks, everybody, for attending. And it's always nice to hear during public comments of different things going on and how the actions of the Planning Commission and the council affect individual homeowners is always, is always good to hear. But lots of good information today, lots of good information about the, the couplet, the downtown couplet there. Like the mayor said, it's been a long time coming. You know, I know the 10 years I've been on council, we've talked about it every year and still haven't seen any shovels. But we'll, we're getting there. We're getting close, which is a good thing. Also, I wanted to thank everybody who participated in DEA Drug Takeback Day last Saturday. You know, and thank Fred Meyer for participating in that. DEA Drug Takeback Day is where you can turn in prescription and non-prescription medications for disposal. You turn them in directly to the DEA. You know, no questions asked. Whatever it is you turn in, they dispose of and they safely. And they go from there. But one of the things is, you know, well, maybe you went to DEA Drug Takeback Day and cleaned out your medicine cabinet and then you had to go have surgery. So now you got a bunch of drugs sitting in your medicine cabinet that you don't need. You know, you didn't take them because you don't need them. So they're still there. They're still a hazard to your children and to babysitters or perhaps anybody that doesn't believe the Wasilla Police Department is going to keep you out of their house. Believe me, they will do a great job doing that. But that's still a hazard to the community. And you can dispose of drugs at any time. We have David Wilson with us today from Matzoo Health Foundation. Also, any pharmacy around town. If you tell them, hey, I've got some prescription medications I want to get rid of, they'll give you this magic little bag that you can put them in. You take, you take that bag home, you put the drugs in there. You put some water in there and then, I don't know exactly how that works, David, but essentially renders them inert. And then they can be disposed of at that time. So please don't keep unneeded prescription drugs in your house because that is a real problem. You know, 85% of teens, say, their first experience with opioids was through a, an adult's medicine cabinet. You know, not from digging under the bed to try and find prescriptions. It was right there in the medicine cabinet. And they said, oh, hey, I've heard about this. Let's give this a shot. So, but anyway, thank you very much for doing that. And thank you, Matzoo Health Foundation, for being able to always provide those bags whenever needed. Also, Alaska Municipal League is coming up in December. We do have the opportunity for the city of Wasilla to send somebody to what's being called the Conference of Young Alaskans, which is essentially young persons who are interested, you know, may be interested, I should say, in perhaps serving in government in some form. You know, perhaps on Planning Commission, perhaps on City Council, perhaps, you know, Senator, you know, for the state of Alaska. Could be anything. But the Council of Young Alaskan allows, allows young folks to come together and kind of see how government works and talk a little bit with it about others. The age limit on that, Madam Mayor, I think is 17 to 24, 25? Something like that. If you are interested or you know somebody that you think is interested, let us know and we'll get, get them a scholarship. You know, go to Anchorage for three days to participate in the AML Annual Conference and learn a little bit more about government and kind of figure out if that's something that they, where they think they can add to society. So that would be a good thing. And also, the handout that the clerk's office put together about AML talks about two banquets there. One of the banquets is the AML wrap-up banquet. And the other banquet is at the clerk's banquet. And there, it does list a price for that. If you're interested in going, just talk to the clerks and they will fill you in on exactly how that works. So normally, the price of the banquet is included in the AML registration fee. This year it was not for the end of AML. And then the clerk's banquet is always separate on Tuesday nights. Great way to stop in and say thank you to the clerks. They do a tremendous job. But any questions, make sure you talk to the clerk's office and they'll get those answered for you. Please turn in your paperwork and please attend if you can. It's a great opportunity to learn from others' mistakes. So just as they learn from ours, we learn from theirs. So once again, thanks, everybody, for being here. Congratulations to those hard-fought elections. Look forward to working with them for the next three years. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I look forward to returning back to chambers in December 10. And I'll be returning to Alaska later this week. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rubio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was a nail-biter. You never know with these elections. But thank you to everyone that did come out. And congratulations to Councilman Schmidt. And welcome back to Councilman Johnson. Walking up the hallway, and I know you saw some decorations, but it got me really excited about Friday. I do love trick-or-treating. If you know me, I like all the holidays. So it's starting to look nice. But I won't take anything from the mayor, so it looks great.
Okay, Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm very excited about getting going here, being actually elected by the people of Wasilla, even though it wasn't that many people that voted for me. I still appreciate all the people that did show up and voted for me. And just excited to get going on this. That's it.
Okay, and welcome back to Councilmember Rubio and Councilmember Schmidt. And welcome back to you, Councilmember Johnson. I look forward to working with all of you guys, what time I have left. So I'm sure you're wondering about what we've got going on here with all of the flowers and all. Well, come Friday, from 2:00 to 5:30? 2:00 to 5:00, follow the Yellow Brick Road. So if you want to see your directors all dressed up portraying a character from The Wizard of Oz, that's the time to come. And what we're doing is decorating for the Yellow Brick Road. It's going to be great. And if you think this is good, you should see upstairs. I have flying monkeys in, by my office. So I'm all excited about that. And a shout out to Cars, Fred Meyer's, Walmart, Walgreens and the VFW for their generous donations of candy. And to the Wasilla High Art Class and to all of the volunteers and the employees and everything that is making this happen and it come together. It's going to be a great community event. So bring your kids. This is a safe, friendly environment for them to trick or treat. And come and join us. It's going to be great. Our Public Works guy is going to be the lollipop. And what you're going to be, Eric?
I'll be one of the Lollipop Guild members, yes.
Yes. By all means, it'll be great. Of course, I get to be Glenda the Good Witch. Yeah, be quiet. Anyway, with nothing further to come before this council, I adjourn the meeting at 7:20.